I hereby call this special meeting in Norwood City Council Quarter. Please rise for the council prayer. Bless believers. Our Father, Lord of Heaven, has a body we congregate in this council chamber. We pray that we may do all things well, for we are in by holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America. And to be very humbling before which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Williams, please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Gabbard.
Here.
Mr. Geraci.
Here.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. DiNardo.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
All members present, moving on to item E, amendment of agenda. We don't have any amendments this evening. So we will move on to item F, minutes of previous meeting, November 26, 2020, Norwood City Council meeting minutes. Mr. Geraci.
Make a motion to file and receive.
Motion by Mr. Geraci to receive and file. Mr. Thompson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item G, request to address council on agenda items. I don't have anyone that wants to speak on agenda items this evening. Moving on to item H, reports of standing committees of council. H1, Housing Health and Public Safety Committee Report. Mr. Geraci.
Housing Health and Public Safety, July 23, 2020, to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, your committee of Housing Health and Public Safety, to whom it was referred, discussed the Chronic Nuisance Ordinance. Beg you leave to submit the following report. Discussion was provided along with changes to the fourth draft. A fifth draft will be created, and one more meeting will be held to discuss that fifth draft.
Respectfully submitted. Respectfully.
Oh, I respectfully submit Mr. Matthew Geraci, Mr. Michael Gabbard, Mr. James Bonzel, and Mr. Chris Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Do I have a motion? Mr. Bonzel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we receive and file this committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Motion by Mr. Bonzel to receive and file. Mr. DiNardo?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Moving on to item H2, Finance Budget and Audit Committee Report. Mr. DiNardo.
To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, we, your finance committee, to whom it was referred, the following agenda. The first item, we reviewed in an attempt to submit a formal bid process with thresholds for purchase approval. We would evaluate other process risk items per the assignment from the president of council as part of the audit committee items from the state. Secondly, we wanted to plan the third quarter budget review with a 2020 view and prepare for 2021 forecast. In the meeting, the committee was presented with a draft purchasing policy noting the proposed approval hierarchy, thresholds, and terms of the city's competitive bid and purchase activities. We debated the content of these items and arrived at modifications that should be submitted to the president of council. The committee was presented with a draft purchase order general practices policy, which laid out the defined purchase order types, the support and approval requirements of each PO type, and the instances for which they can be entered into. These were explained and largely accepted by the committee for submission. The committee intends to provide the president of council with these policy recommendations, which also considered input from the Law and Audit Department, who will then seek approval from the State of Ohio's Audit Office. And I think Ken mentioned he was going to do that tomorrow. Or, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Merrick. It will then be presented to the general counsel as an ordinance to approve. I think we're waiting until we get that back to put that in for the next general council's meeting. After we talked about the POs and purchasing thresholds, we also discussed the method and format of the biannual budget review, the next of which will take place targeting August 2020, so next month. We will review the cash position expenditures, PO funding positions, and our revenue. And we will review critical needs list of the big three, which was to include police, fire, and public works, and evaluate 2020 capital improvement plan against these needs and consider our financial position. Mr. Bonzel also recommended that this happen on a more informal basis without those other parties, at least quarterly, and so we're going to try to do that as well. But the formal budget review will happen biannually. Regards, myself, Chris Kelch, James Bonzel, John Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the committee report be received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Geraci. Any discussion? Please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item I, Third Readings of Ordinance's Resolutions. I-1, ordinance requiring facial coverings to be worn in certain circumstances while indoor public places during dependence of the mayor's declaration for the safe reopening of Norwood during the COVID-19 pandemic and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we table this ordinance indefinitely.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to table the motion indefinitely? Mr. Thompson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. So the motion on the floor is to table item I-1 indefinitely? First by Mr. Bonzel, second by Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. President. So, I mean, you know, it's obvious that there's prob-- based on the discussion from the last meeting that there's probably not support to pass this today. We also do have the mandate from the governor's office, so, you know, Norwood residents are required when we're-- or anybody is required in Norwood when you're in a public place. And social distancing can't be observed, that we need to wear masks. So I think the best course of action would be to table this for now. If the governor's mandate were to expire, or be withdrawn, or otherwise not be in effect, having this on the table would allow the council to easily come back and consider this at a later date. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. It was kind of brought up last meeting that this is a very important issue, and we needed to pass this now, and we tried to go on then and talk about then, and now all of a sudden we want to table it. And these two of the people that wanted to table it here, they're just putting it into the Housing Health and Public Safety Committee so that we could look more into it and ask questions and kind of see the need for it. I just think that's kind of unfortunate that we can't vote on that this evening.
Mr. Kelch, can I interrupt you for one second, please? I just received a text from Tyler Meyer. He asked us if we could stop for one second or having a-- he has to reset a setting. Can we do that for just one minute, please?
Revoating. It's signed?
Oh, yeah. We good? Okay, we're good to go. Forgive me, Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion right now is to table the ordinance, item I-1. Hope we said last meeting, it was a very pressing, very important issue. I guess what I'm trying to say is I would like to ask that the motion to table be rescinded and we just vote on it this evening.
Mr. Thompson?
I still believe it's an important and pressing issue. However, I believe that if we vote on it this evening, that it will be killed, and that's not what I want to see happen. So I think by tabling it, it gives the city the opportunity to bring this up at a later date when circumstances might change and the city might decide that it wants to have control over this situation. I personally still believe that the city should have control over this situation, and I do not understand why council seems to think differently, but be that as it may, everybody pretty much made clear what they thought the last time around. So by doing this, I see it more as a compromise that if in the future we wanted to bring this back, if we did not like what the direction from the governor was, and we felt that Norwood needed to take this matter into its own hands, this allows us to do it with the ordinance that we had prepared for us without starting the process over again. So that's why I support tabling it for now.
Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to echo Mr. Thompson, I mean, it was said by at least three council members on this floor two weeks ago that this is a duplication. This is a-- it's a repeat of basically what the governor's already done. So if that's the case, then I don't see the harm in tabling it, because that's, you know, what was voiced at the last meeting. I don't see the harm in tabling it, and then it could be reconsidered at a later date. But it would still take four votes to even bring it off the table. So if the four council members that did not-- that voiced opposition to it at the last meeting, if one of them wants to bring it back up, then we can look at that. But if not, it'll just stay on the table, and it probably won't be brought up again. So I guess it just seems like the right place for it to be, since it doesn't have the support right now to pass.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? The motion on the floor is to table the ordinance, item I-1. We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel, a second by Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion?
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
No.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
No.
All members present, we have five ayes, two noes, motion passes. Moving on to item J, Second Reading of Ordinance's Resolutions. We don't have any this evening. That brings us to item K-1, Introductory Readings of Ordinance Resolutions. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the City of Norwood to enter into an operations agreement with the Norwood City Board of Health and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm actually not sure on the urgency of this, but I would like to ask, if possible, if council would consider allowing John Moore to speak on this. He's the one that's been spearheading the efforts of the residents. So I'd consider asking the present council to allow John Moore to just quickly address council about what this is.
I think we're on the board of health.
Oh, my apologies.
It's okay. But I imagine you still wanted to-- there was an urgency with the first.
Yes, okay, so then I would make a motion to have all three readings of the Board of Health.
I would second that.
Sorry about that.
We have a motion by Mr. Bonzel, a second by Mr. DiNardo, to have all three readings. Any discussion?
Yes, I get it. I prepared this because we don't have internet down here, so I'm going to be reading from my phone, just so I can try to lay out the background and the options for council, but also for people on TV. I'll speak as loud as I can. This ordinance is an attempt to create a Norwood Board of Health as a standalone entity. High revised code used language that each Board of Health shall be independent of the city in terms of reporting and audit filing. Previously, the City of Norwood interpreted that to mean they exist as a city department but have to file their own audit. In the process of filing 2019 financials, this was flagged by the state stating we were the only city that had a health department underneath its own city entity. We questioned whether that was true or not, but regardless, that's what the state said. So we then went about setting up a Board of Health as an independent entity. There are two options that the mayor and the auditor went through to kind of think how to set that out. The first, separate out completely to a new entity with all employees, assets, and resources falling under the newly created Board of Health. However, doing so would mean these employees of the newly created Board of Health would not be part of the city or fall under the current union. City of Norwood would simply send a stipend annually, and the employees would potentially lose any current benefits under their existing employment. Alternatively, the Board of Health, the newly created Board of Health, would be established with one single employee, the Health Commissioner. The city would retain and supply all staffing, so these employees would keep the same status and benefits that currently exist under the city administration. All revenues that come in are directed straight to the Board of Health and not part of the city, but spent. As those revenues come in, they are used to pay the Health Commissioner, their supplies and utilities, and other expenses, but this is done so outside of the city. The city's responsibilities are to supply vehicles, the building itself, all staffing, and an additional-- and annual stipend, as considered by the Board and provided for the city for review on an annual basis. At the start of the year, the city will review the Board of Health's budget as it's been forecasted, and agree to pay out this directly from the city to the Board of Health when the review is completed. So, the action tonight. In the current year, we at the city have filed both audits for Norwood and the Department of Health with the expectation that this agreement go into effect by the deadline of July 31, so in a few days, noting that this is within the one-month extension that has already been provided to the city. However, it's worth considering that this was all a fairly sudden interpretation, but in either way, it still has to be passed tonight. Day-to-day operations of the Board of Health won't be much different than the Department of Health that we see today, except for the fact that now the Board of Health must have their own budgetary process and formally request the annual stipend. This is obviously more responsibility, but offers potentially more freedom for the Board of Health to run their own process. For example, the Board of Health can seek their own grants, request donations with all the resulting-- or request donations with all the resulting revenue going 100% to them. The city would just act as bookkeepers. Again, this has to pass tonight as it meets what the state wants to see. It maintains a strong health department, soon to be the Board of Health, and might give them the ability to own their own top line. Furthermore, this allows for flexibility in the future on both sides, city and the Board of Health, to evaluate budget needs and staffing levels in future periods. Hopefully that was a bit of background. Any questions I could try to answer?
Any questions? Mr. Bonzel.
No questions. I did want to just make a correction, and it's not on you at all, but the Board of Health is already like its own entity. It's just that they don't have complete autonomous control over the finances there. And I think what this is doing is keeping the politics completely separate by separating out the finances and the structures, I guess, if you will. But the Board of Health is already there, there's already people appointed to it, they're just going to take on, I think, more responsibility. But everything else is exactly right.
Cool. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other comments, discussion? Mr. Gabbard, sir.
Just curious, is the mayor's thoughts on this particular change?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, to use a favorite term of council members, I would like to echo the thoughts of Mr. Bonzel. I mean, the Board of Health has been around since 1890-something, and has operated as a separate entity for many, many years. They have always-- the Board of Health has always felt that they were a separate entity. This does give them a little more responsibility financially to make sure that they are operating efficiently, and it really makes them the masters of their own destiny when it comes to certain grants and how they are spending money. It is a new challenge for them because they have always been able to depend on the city and providing them with the funds necessary to operate. They will have to prove their worth every time, and I think that's an interesting aspect of it. On the other hand, it opens a lot of doors for them to operate efficiently, to pick up more grants, to pick up, you know, funding in different areas that quite frankly weren't open to them in previous times, so. It is a necessity. This is something that was passed, I think it started in 2013, this started going this way. In 2017, it was-- there was a directive put out that it needs to occur, and this is the time where we've finally gotten to a stage where it needs to occur. It also is part of the city coming out of our financial-- getting out of our financial emergency. This is something that complies with the Order of State's requirements, so it's necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, I also am going to support this ordinance tonight, and also, as Mr. DiNardo said, we do need to do all three readings tonight, just in order to comply with our audit requirements. But I do want to just note that this agreement does properly protect the city. So if the city ever wants to go in a different direction, or if the city ever wants to change, you know, how much it subsidizes the health department, the control is still on the city. We're not obligated to do anything in the future. Even though we all love our health department right now, you know, we still need to make sure that we're not spending money without the ability to not have to. So the employees are still-- are going to be employees of the city administration, the city, the Safety Service Director, except for the Health Commissioner. And so that means that, again, it's the city's paying for those employees. You know, the city's still going to have ownership over the building, the city's going to-- I think we're paying for the utilities, too. So all of that kind of stays the same, and then-- but the health department, you know, they're likely going to have their own tax ID, they're going to, like they said, they're going to be able to go after grants that were harder for them to get because some of that money would get mixed in with city money at times. So there's a lot of positives for everybody here, and I think it's also important to note that, I mean, this is-- this is-- seems to me to be a pretty obvious attempt by the State of Ohio to try to eliminate these small health departments, you know, across the state, to put more and more burden onto them to have to do their own thing, do their own audits, manage their own finances. And so I think that is unfortunate, but I think that the city auditor, the auditor of state's office, I think they've come up with a strong plan here, except one that protects the Board of Health and protects the city, and I think it really, I guess, like the mayor said, it empowers the Board of Health to do what they need to do to help serve the citizens as best as possible. That I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any further discussion? Please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings, please?
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the City of Norwood to enter into an operations agreement with the Norwood City Board of Health and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the City of Norwood to enter into operations agreement with the Norwood City Board of Health and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director on behalf of the City of Norwood to enter into an operations agreement with the Norwood City Board of Health and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Geraci.
Make a motion to pass.
Motion by Mr. Geraci. May I have a second? Mr. DiNardo? Any further discussion? Please call the floor.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item K2, Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with some Norwood residents for the improvement and maintenance of the city right-of-way at the southeast corner of Floral and Hudson Avenues and declaring an emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that we have the first and second readings of this ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to have the first and second readings. Mr. DiNardo?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Mr. Geraci.
I guess I'll jump off right on the bat here and say, can we possibly do all three tonight?
Can you speak? I didn't hear you. You speak up, I can't hear you.
Can we possibly do all three tonight?
I'm just surprised, I thought you guys would want to.
I'm surprised by that. Well, the only reason I say this is this was discussed, I mean, not the ordinance itself, but the park was discussed during our park committee meeting, and we really didn't have any objection to it. It was more or less an informational session to tell us what was going on, and there really wasn't a ton of objection during that meeting. So that's why I'm, you know, I don't know that there's going to be a whole lot of objection as far as residents coming out and speaking against it, so, you know, instead of holding up the process and allowing this to move forward, I think we just go through the three readings tonight and move it forward.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also advocate for having all three readings tonight. Mr. Moore came to our agreement with this, very well thought-out plan, very detailed. He actually went and communicated with some of the residents, property owners right around there, even one resident who was at first kind of against it, told Mr. Moore they would explain it, he kind of talks about what's going to happen and how it's going to maintain and that, so he's done a lot of work on this, and like Mr. Geraci said, this is something we did not oppose, so I would like to see this happen to them, and I think it would be a very good thing for the city to hopefully keep going, move forward.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Gabbard.
Yeah, Mr. Bonzel mentioned before, I would like to ask Mr. Moore if he would come and just share a little bit about this for others that weren't a part of the committee, or just for the general public, just kind of know what's going on here, and what his thoughts are, and what this particular project will entail.
Do you approach, Mr. President?
Of course.
Thank you all for having me here tonight. My name is John Moore. I live at 2432 Hudson Avenue. As Mr. Kelch indicated, I was present at the Parks and Public Spaces Subcommittee meeting back in May, that being two months after I had originally made contact with the subcommittee, the law director, the owner of the adjacent property, et cetera. And what we're talking about here is essentially in the tree lawn, if you will, of Floral Ave at the corner of Hudson. There is a small piece of grass, about 2,100 square feet, that is the side yard of an apartment building that empties onto Hudson, and whereas almost every other property on Floral, that tree lawn is their front yard, in this instance, it is their side yard. And so I basically just, you know, with all the talk about the parks and trying to improve those, I thought, hey, this could be a nice public space that with no investment from the city, all privately funded by residents, you know, what if we were to do something here? So I came up with a basic design, gathered a group of about 12 to 15 residents, we went out there, we had different props to sort of simulate, hey, you know, if we put benches here, we put them there, tried different orientations, moved some things around that might simulate flower beds or trees, and ultimately came up with a design that the community felt good about, that was a very basic design that would be incongruent with the other tree lawns in the area. Just today, in fact, at the request of Ms. Dana Bull, we had a professional landscape architect out there to walk through some of the particulars of implementation. To date, more than $1,800 has been raised from various residents to contribute to buying trees, benches, et cetera. Lieutenant Murphy has been brought into the mix with regards to any sort of traffic issues in that area. issues in that area, do we need to block off some space to make it a no parking zone, things like that, all with the idea that at this very busy corner in the southeast part of Norwood, that we could have a nice public space that would promote walkability, might be a nice stopoff point or a meeting point for folks heading over to Waspin Way, might be just a nice informal gathering space, so I'm sitting there with my wife and another couple, and somebody walks by and it's, oh, hey, you guys know so-and-so, meet your neighbors, that kind of thing. So really simple, I think just a small way to beautify Norwood, and I appreciate you all's consideration with regards to this. If there's any specific questions, I'm glad to answer those.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Great job.
Well done. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure, I forgot who the second was.
It was Mr. Donardo.
I'll just say, I have no objections to amending my motion to have all three readings tonight.
No, it's great for me, yeah.
So we will, Mr. Bonzel and Mr. Donardo have rescinded their previous motion, so motion now is to have all three readings. Any other discussion? Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, Mrs. Williams, may we have all three readings, please?
Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with some Norwood residents for the improvement and maintenance of the city right-of-way at the southeast corner of Floral and Hudson Avenues and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with some Norwood residents for the improvement and maintenance of the city right-of-way at the southeast corner of Floral and Hudson Avenues and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into an agreement with some Norwood residents for the improvement and maintenance of the city right-of-way at the southeast corner of Floral and Hudson Avenues and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Geraci. Any further discussion? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So I did want to quickly recognize the residents that are stepping in to take on, you know, this responsibility when it comes to signing the agreement to the city and kind of helping to maintain this area. Also, I don't think it was, I don't remember if Mr. Moore mentioned it, but the property owner nearby the apartment building at, I think it's 2301 Hudson, that owner's also agreed and signed on, and I think that owner's still going to mow the grass there, just like the owner does today. So that's a really great aspect of this. But the residents that we're going to kind of sign this agreement with, it's, you know, John and Jessica Moore, Hillary Copsy Cannon, Alex and Anna Malash, Candace and Paul Winterbauer, Ian and Lindsay Matthews, Jason and Taylor Province, Alicia and Colin Locke, Steve and Jeanie Sickinger, Karen and John Harrison, Dana Bull, and Debbie Carley. And so I just want to thank those residents for stepping up with the planning, with helping to fundraise, and, you know, just helping just to be there and create another place where we can kind of be in the neighborhood. So I think that's a really great thing. So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. May I have a motion?
You already have a motion.
We already got a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, we already did. Forgive me. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Braden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, the motion passes. Item K3, resolution proposing changes to the codified ordinances of the City of Norwood, Ohio entitled Administrative Procedures. Mr. Kelch.
I'd like to make a motion to have all three readings tonight.
There's a motion by Mr. Kelch to have all three readings of the ordinance. Do I have a second? Mr. Braden?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Braden. Discussion? Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is something that I wanted to do after there was a more zoning appeals meeting, a conditional use change for a property, and it's pretty fair, it's pretty clear, and the process, but there was a couple of things that was kind of, that were kind of bothering me, talking to some of the residents, even those that put in for the conditional change, was kind of the lack of people in the know, rather, who they're telling and how they're telling. During the COVID situation, it's a little tough, but looking at it, there's only 200 feet from the property, and there was only 10 days' notice given, so what I was wanting to do, and I was able to speak to Mr. Chris Brown, who wrote the ordinance for that that he used, and he also said that giving the residents more time and an opportunity for more residents to know about these changes could be beneficial, and he was, I'm supportive of that. So what I would be asking to do is, tonight is to have this three readings passed, allow the planning commission to look at it, look it over, make some changes for their suggestions, and then send it back. As it works at the process, so we give this under aye, allows them the opportunity to do their part and move this forward, with transparency and that kind of thing, I think this is a good thing, having more residents alerted about these changes to these buildings or settlements going on around them, and giving more days for the notices to be sent out so that they can plan and maybe schedule a deal at meetings. I think it'd be a little easier for them, I think it'd go a long way in opening the process up to more residents. So I'd be asking for this thing passed.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Any other discussion? Mr. Thompson.
And just to clarify, what's changing is the radius from the business from 200 to 300?
Yes.
Right, and, and then increasing the number of days?
That are notices sent out.
What's it increasing to?
From 10 to 14.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any further discussion?
That'd be a quick question. I meant to text you. What, what's 100 feet in terms of like houses?
How many houses are there? So I was able to speak with Ms. Gary Towne in the building department, she had a family of two, it was about around the difference from 200 feet is what it was to 300 feet, like the difference of about 28 ounces.
Okay, so say that again.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot more families, a lot more properties around that property that are going to be notified and alerted of the change.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Gabbard.
Is this, a question through to Mr. Kelch, does this go across the whole thing of any type of changes? Because I know in this particular case, it was a conditional use, which meant it wasn't about feet, it was only the house immediately next door. The other ones require 200 feet.
Mr. Kelch?
So looking at the actual code with Mr. Gary, it does say in there, well, actually, I'm sorry, Ms. Towne, rather, Mr. Gary, it does say in there 200 feet of the property is what it's supposed to be, planning for the conditional use change that took place for that corner lot on Hopkins. Also for rezoning, which this, it wasn't rezoned, it was just conditional use change. So yeah, this would change rezoning, conditional use change, because they're very similar, they're different, they're a different process, classified as a different thing, but what's essentially happening is it is being rezoned, but under different ordinances. So what this is doing is mirroring both those ordinances on how the parameters that we put out and the time that we, the time, the meeting that we give them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So I did want to, I think there's a couple of issues here. One, I think the building department, to me, it seems like they might have made a mistake because as Mr. Kelch stated, there's no, I mean, from everything I can see, there's no exception to the 200 feet notification rule, just because it's a residential property originally. And I think there was some misinterpretation by the building department, thinking that there is an exception there, and that only the abutting property owners had to be notified. So I think that right now, that when people complain that they weren't notified, I think part of that is that the building department, in my opinion, misinterpreted the ordinance and did not notify them, as Mr. Kelch, you know, kind of stated there. The other, so I will say that I don't know that the failure of notification affected this one because the property owner did make sure that people knew that they wanted to put an art studio there, and the residents all knew because they were, many of them were at the BZA meeting, so I will just say on this specific item, I don't think that necessarily affected it, but I do think that the building department needs to get that right in the future. So with that being said, I think that when people say that they're frustrated they weren't notified, and we look at the 200 feet, I don't know if it's because, I don't think it's because of the 200 feet, I think it's just because we didn't send out any notices, or no notices were sent out except for the abutting property owners. The other item is that even though in this specific instance, the building department was the one that mailed the certified mail out, it's, that's not normally how it works. Normally, almost, in almost all cases, it's the actual applicant that takes the responsibility of getting the addresses, sending certified mail to the property owners. Or there's another alternate way to do it, but I would think that most people probably do the certified mail route. And so because of that, you know, by increasing it 100 feet, that's increasing the administrative burden on people that want to apply to have a conditional use. So I would just ask if there's any evidence that, you know, 300 feet is better than 200 feet? And then the other part change of this is going from 14 days from 10 days, and again, I would just ask the same thing, is there any evidence? I did talk to the chairman of the Board of Zoning Appeals, it's been doing this for 20 years now, and he wasn't sure, he's, this is the first time he's heard of somebody, anybody wanting a change in that, and so he wasn't sure what the justification is. And then we also have to remember too, that there are some other places in the zoning code that talk about specific dates, that you have to have your request in by the 20th of the month, or it's going to be heard at a different month's meeting. And there's other places too, where just specific dates are mentioned. So, you know, I would just, I think there's more to this than that. So, and I don't, again, I don't know if this is super well thought out, just because, again, the residents didn't get notified because I think the building department made a mistake, it's not because the 200 feet versus 300 feet, I don't think it's because that's wrong, I think it's just because there was a, there was an issue with the interpretation. So with all of that being said, you know, I am going to vote no on the three readings today.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Braden, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Question to Mr. Bonzel through the chair, please. You mentioned, you mentioned the specific incident, and maybe I missed it, maybe I missed that specific incident, I'm, you know, you know, my hearing isn't the best, but if you would recall that for me, and also, you also mentioned that there may be more to this. Can you elaborate? And I'm just curious, just to help me on, and decide, because I'm undecided tonight here. And so there's two things you mentioned that I'd like you to clarify, if that's okay.
Mr. Bonzel.
I'll address the second one first, on the, there may be, I don't remember the exact context frankly, that I said that there may be more to this. I mean, I think that if I was saying, I think what I would say is about the ordinance is that there could be more things that would have to be adjusted in order to allow the city to comply with this and allow the 14 days to actually work. So, and again, I haven't heard any evidence of why the 14 days is better than the 10. The first item when it comes to the incident, so there was an application to the BZA for a conditional use at a building on Hopkins Avenue, and the, many of the residents that were right there were vocally opposed to it, and they actually did not get notified like they probably should, they should have got notified because the building department, instead of directing the applicant or mailing out themselves, which they did in this case, to 200 feet, they thought that they, what they needed to do was mail it to just the abutting property owners. And so there was just a mistake that was made with the interpretation, at least that's my opinion of it. So it had just to do with a conditional use at the last BZA meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you.
Mr. Donardo.
So I think that it's interesting, the fact that Mr. Gabbard asked for clarification on, wait, I thought it was just the immediate neighbors, and then we found out, actually, it's supposed to be beyond that, maybe that didn't happen in practice, but that was probably its original intention. Does that change anything for you, knowing that it was more the misapplication of the original rule, not the need to change the rule, potentially?
No, it does not, because I agree that there was a mistake there, that's why I'm going to let Mr. Bonzel know, I agree there's probably a mistake on this process, but there's also almost 30 other properties in this city, which I think he will be trying to acquire and do the same changes. So after, and it doesn't change that for me, I'm sorry, because after the meeting, talking to the applicant of this property and other residents that were there, some that were notified by mail, some that heard by word of mouth, the constant response and the constant sentiment is, I wish more people knew, and I wish we could have more time, even the applicants, because they were like, we could have talked to them, we could have had this kind of talked about and planned out, and we could have had more time and more people know what was going on. So that's why it doesn't change for me that there was a mistake, I understand there was a mistake, but what this is trying to do, and that justification for me, is here in front of the residents right after this meeting, at this meeting, and the applicants at this meeting, that they just wish more people were notified, and in the sake of being transparent and doing these things, I wish and hope that we can alert more residents and give more time.
And I got one more question.
Real quick, Mr. Donardo, can you move your microphone closer? Mr. Kelch has texted me, said you're having trouble here. Thank you, sir.
Thanks for that. And then the follow-up was, I wasn't clear from the, to you, is the burden to go through the process for the new 300-foot radius and the 10 days, 14 days, is kind of the same for me? Is the burden on the building department or the applicant in this proposal?
So at least for the conditional use changes on the applicant, like Mr. Bonzel's saying, it's usually the applicant that will do that in the aftermath, perfect, and alert it, the residents, and then determine.
Yeah. I, I think that's right, I just wanted to clarify, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Mr. Thompson.
I just have one more clarifying question for Mr. Kelch.
Yes, sir.
You said this is a resolution, so it's not an ordinance that we're passing, so you said it sort of gets the process rolling, this takes a resolution to the building department?
Yes.
Could you explain a little bit more about what the next steps are?
Yeah, so from my understanding from Mr. Gary, I'm sure Mr. Moore would probably have more on this, is that after we've gotten past this, it'll go to the planning department, where they're planning, or they'll review it, have any feedback or changes, where some Mr. Bonzel's concerned, I believe, would be referenced in that meeting for them, and then it'll be sent back, but I would like to see, Mr. Moore would like to respond in a better way on that.
Mr. Moore.
Sure. This is part of the zoning code, planning code, so the changes have to come from the planning commission. So this is council's, this is the formal way for council to tell the planning commission, hey, we'd like you to change this part of what we have in the code. The planning commission can adopt this change, adopt other changes, tweak it, do whatever, and they could just not do anything with it, but that's the process. Once they've made a decision on whatever they want to do, it comes back to council, and then council votes on whether to accept their recommendation or not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anything else, Mr. Thompson? Yes, sir.
I'm agreeing with half of this. I'm agreeing with the more time, I'm not so much agreeing with the additional area covered, I kind of understand the desire, I just did quick math, and it more than doubles the area of homes that need to be notified, just doing radius math. So it's a much larger area, and, and I, I want to be cognizant of the residents who are sort of immediately impacted by a business, but I, I also want to be cognizant of the potential business and them not needing to factor in the desires of residents who are a block and a half away. So that's where I'm, I'm torn, that's why I was clarifying on what happened afterwards, because I'm, I'm buying in on the more time, I like the more time, I'm just not quite sold on the distance, which is, makes me, I'm not sure I want to vote on this just yet, but that's where I'm. But that's where I'm.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Kelch.
Can I quickly respond? Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, so some areas, and I was looking at this on the map with Ms. Towns, some areas that are more densely populated residential are going to, there could be more, it could double on the amount of residents that are notified. Somewhere is kind of less densely populated, it might not. But my thought is, even in all of our wards, we have different little neighborhoods. And we have a lot of these buildings in Norwood where it affects more than just those houses right next to it, on that street or on the next street over. That one that's a block away, and I think for the one, just for the sake of us, instance, we had Hopkins alerted people all the way just down to Bell Street, which is just that block. And then down farther a little bit, and then the houses immediately across the street on Hopkins. So it's 20 something more houses, but we're not talking like two, three blocks away. You know, we're talking that little neighborhood that's within that ward. And then you've got another part of the neighborhood where that would be able to cover more and just be more open and have a lot more people know what's going on. So that's where my thinking was kind of in line with this as well. It kind of covers that part of that neighborhood in a way. Yeah, and some areas where it's higher populated, it could double.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Mr. Dracy.
I think as far as the distance is concerned, you have to look at traffic flow. You have to look at traffic pattern. You have to look at parking patterns. You have to look at how many spaces are going to be taken up by a business put into a residential area. So expanding it out, 28 houses or whatever it may be, would be beneficial just to the fact of the residents that are used to parking in certain areas, even though it is public parking on the street, they're used to parking in these certain spots. They may not be able to because a business is put into a residential area like that. So getting the notification out to these extra 28 houses that may be impacted by this parking issue, it, to me, is substantial. Because as a lot of us know, in Norwood, the houses, the driveways, they weren't built for the cars, the vehicles that are being driven now. So you may not get, you know, a family of four who has four vehicles to have four vehicles in a driveway. You may not have, you may have an apartment down the street that may not have the parking necessities in a parking lot. So a lot of that's going to impact a wider area, bringing in a business, bringing in whatever it may be, based on traffic flow. Now, I don't know what the owner is required to do as far as the building or the zoning commission, if they're required to do a parking analysis or a traffic flow analysis. But I think that, you know, if that's not required, that might be something that the Board of Zoning looks into if we're gonna start allowing things like this into residential areas. And I think that those extra 28 houses or buildings be included with that, because they are definitely going to be affected. You're definitely probably going to see at least four extra blocks of parking, even if those residents are parking there, you're still, because if somebody's going to a business within a residential area, they may not find parking within two or three blocks. They may have to go four and five blocks away. So that, you're still getting outside that 300-foot zone even at that point. And I think that's, that's the biggest reason that I see expanding that distance out and including that 14 days.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Mr. DiNardo.
Yeah. I, it's interesting. I was originally probably going to either say no or I had some hesitancy. But your explanation is really important on the side of caution for residents who are worried about something coming in. I think it's, you could also take that same mindset and flip it and say someone who was outside of the original immediate housing, I'm saying immediate loosely, and it was expanded this 20, this magic 28 houses, if they would potentially see benefit from, in that case, an art studio or who, whatever the heck comes next, their voice of affirmation, of support, of, you know, a positive tone could actually help something come in. Whereas, you know, if you only heard the immediate two neighbors, my immediate reaction to my next door neighbor doing something would go, oh, okay, hold on. And then maybe I had to be convinced over the course of a couple of weeks. But if I'm down the street and I see someone putting in an art studio or all the other great things that we want to put in, maybe that would help spur support and have the right kind of conversation. So I actually really think it's great for both concern, the, kind of that point of caution, but also it helps try to get kind of that positive perspective by expanding that out. So actually, I will support this.
Thank you, Mr. DiNardo. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just curious if the mayor had any comments on it and whether he knew how the, any other information from the building department about this?
Mr. Mayor.
I really don't have any comments on it. It sounds like you guys are having a pretty good discussion on it and you'll get it all figured out, and then the planning commission can look at it and BZA, so no comments really. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gabbard.
Based on Mr. Moore's comments, I doubt that BZA is even gonna do anything with this. I mean, it's probably really a waste of our time. I'm okay, I'm with Mr. Thompson on this. I'm okay with the amount of days because of the, I don't know what's going on with the US Mail, but for some reason lately, people are not getting stuff on time. And so the 14 days, just make sure that they get that there. I'm okay with keeping it at 200, as long as it's 200, it's not, you know, it's not just the abutting properties on this particular thing, and it's 200 here, and it just needs to be across the board on that. So the amount of, because you said that, one of the members made a comment that it would be good that, to hear from more people. And I talked to people that were there from both sides of the argument, and I don't think anybody was impressed with the BZA. They, none of them thought that they were, they were really welcome there because they felt like the BZA was not happy that a lot of people showed up to voice their opinions. And they, they really didn't listen to the people on both sides of the argument. They didn't read the letters that were written, but yet they circulated them. They felt, they felt that need. So I'm, like I said, I'm with Mr. Thompson on this. I would, I like the more days notice, just not, I just don't see there being a use for extending the radius on this. And then again, just to reiterate, I don't think they're gonna do anything with it anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Kelch.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to respond like to Mr. Gabbard. You know, I understand. Whether we think they're gonna do something with it or not, we have a voice here to suggest changes. Whether we think they're gonna change it or not, this is our, like I said, it's our formal process to ask for changes. And I think we need to do that. Whether they're gonna do something or not, hey, we love this change, put it in our court to see what they're going to do. But I agree, I heard some of the same things, Mr. Gabbard, about the meeting. You know, things don't change if we don't act. So whether they're gonna do something with it or not, we need to act, send it to them so they know we want to change, and they want better, and they expect better. And this is the first step, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Kelch. Any further discussion? The motion by Mr. Kelch, second by Mr. Brayden, is to have all three readings. Please call the rolls.
Mr. Bonzel.
No.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Dracy.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, we have six ayes, one no. The motion passes. Moving on to L, administrative reports. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I've got quite a few things here on my agenda to go over with you today, actually, to impress you with, I think. So I'll start at the top, the wellness program, the city's wellness program. We had a meeting on that today, and it's officially sort of kicked off. I don't know, most of you who have been involved with companies and corporations recognize what a wellness program brings to, to the staff, all the different advisors that go out that help them get their health going in the right direction. But, you know, a wellness program also brings benefits to the corporation, the city, the business that's, that's involved in it, because it can defray some of our healthcare costs. So wellness program is going, we're having, we'll have multiple meetings. I've had a couple of meetings with two unions that have basically said, we're all for it. We've been all for it for the last couple of years, and it hasn't taken off. But we will, we will be moving ahead with that. We started having shared interest meetings with the unions, shared interest meetings, you might have heard these called labor management meetings, and they go on between the negotiations. And what they're really supposed to be is, and what we call them in Norwood, is shared interest meetings. So when the union president comes in and talks to the mayor and the two teams are sitting there, it is not us against them, it's how do we make it work? How do we really make the city work best for our community? How do we really share the interest of what products we're trying to put out? And really, so it is customer service to our community. The union members recognize that the better off, the better that they do, the better that the city does, the better it is for all of us. So we're working through some of those. You know, with the Public Works, Public Works Department, we'll be talking about staffing. We'll be talking about, you know, equipment that they need in the future. We'll be talking about their input into the budget process and how, how they can really help us put together a good budget. Same thing for the other departments, police and fire department, and what's sort of coming down the pipe. What they see that is going to be needed for them to complete the task at hand, and how the city then sees it and plans for it is an important part of it. So there are shared interest meetings, and we're working on those right now. It really is also trying to set the stage for good negotiations in the future, when we sit down with them and start talking about the union contracts. What are, what are really good things that can come out of that? So we're sort of laying that foundation. Hamity County Development Corp starts with us in August, actually starts working for the city as our economic development engine. And they've already started. And quite frankly, what I will tell you is, the word is out there that the city of Norwood is open for business. We're starting to get a lot more requests from developers. They want to talk about different projects, they want to be involved in the city of Norwood. And we're already, we're already starting to see some of that. What HCDC brings to us is not just, you know, Hamity County exposure, but regional exposure to other businesses that want to move, that are, that are looking for new, new things, new ideas. And then when you talk about regionally, make that blossom, go out even bigger statewide, Kentucky, Indiana, Ohio, and then nationally. So HCDC really, I think, will be a powerhouse for us in bringing, bringing development to us, bringing the projects and the plans and the things for us to take a look at and then, and then make decisions about where we are going with that stuff. So I really feel like, like that was a good move and a smart move, and I appreciate everyone's efforts to make that happen. The COVID funding, we're working on making sure that we have everything in place to take advantage of the COVID funding that has been brought to us through Hamity County, and we'll continue to work on that. It's changing all the time, it's very dynamic, what you can use that funding for, what you cannot use that funding for. The auditor's office is doing a good job really watching what, what's, how COVID is really affecting the city, especially when it comes to manpower and personnel and staffing. So we're staying on top of that stuff. There are some different improvements that are going on. Of course, if you've driven down Montgomery Road, you've seen the firehouse roof is changing, and we're getting that taken care of. City Hall roof repairs have been taken care of. Most of the stuff we found, it wasn't actually the membrane roof on top of City Hall is okay. It was a lot of gutter problems, a lot of sort of the other problems where, where you would think it's just the roof, but it's gutter problems, things like that. And we've had a lot of that taken care of. Now it's a matter of making sure that, that we actually stop the water from getting in, and then we'll make repairs on the inside where things have sort of went, went sideways while that water is getting in there. Parking lot upgrades, I don't know if either, any of you have noticed, the two municipal parking lots at Sherman and Station and Elmond Station, we removed the old metal guardrails, the old rusty guardrails and all the posts. We're looking at what we'll do on the fencing along the, along Sherman Avenue, where the new playground area is for the, the elementary school that's going to be there. But we're looking at that fencing. They'll be making repairs to the blacktop here soon, and then they'll be sealing that and restriping that. So it'll look as good as the brand new looking parking lot that the city, the school board and the schools have right there. So that's, that's working. We're also going to do some preventive maintenance on the health department lot and the police department, police headquarters parking lot will be taken care of at that same time. Financial recovery plan, we continue to make progress on the president of council's list. He keeps browbeating all of us on making things happen. We are close on the policies and procedures manual. We're probably down to a final draft that'll go out to the law director, the auditor, and the treasurer for sort of a final review. And then we'll be bringing that to council for a discussion in August. I think we should have that done. So that's right around the corner. So maybe at the next meeting, we'll have that for you guys to take a look at. That's a, that's a huge step in the right direction, as you start reading the policies and procedures manual, and you scratch your head and say, I don't understand how we really ran for years without one. It just really will be such a great tool for all the different administrative people and helpful to all the staff to understand, well, this is how it works. You can go to page 13 and look at it. So those will be, that's going to be an important part. The budget stuff is started, we've already started looking at it within the administration. All of the budgets from the police chief, the fire chief, and the different department heads have to have their budgets into the mayor's office by September 1st. And that, that doesn't seem like very far at all, that's right around the corner. So that budget process has started, and we know that's going to be an interesting challenge. Hopefully you guys can hear everything that I'm saying. I didn't move my mic up, I see Tyler coming, it makes me nervous. Anyways, new council chambers, we've got our new council chambers. It's gonna stay like this for a while. I think it's much better than the cafeteria. I know we've got some tweaks to do to it, but I think this will work much better. I do appreciate, I think- okay, it was a lot of gutter problems, a lot of sort of, of the other problems where, where you would think it's just the roof, but it's, it's gutter problems, things like that, and we've had a lot of that taken care of. Now it's a matter of making sure that, that we actually stop the water from getting in, and then we'll make repairs on the inside where things have sort of went, went sideways while that water is getting in there. Parking lot upgrades, I don't know if either, any of you have noticed, the, the two municipal parking lots at Sherman and Station and Elmond Station, we removed the old metal guardrails, the old rusty guardrails and all the posts. We're looking at what we'll do on the fencing along the, along Sherman Avenue, where the new playground area is for the, the elementary school that's going to be there. But we're looking at that fencing. They'll be making repairs to the blacktop here soon, and then they'll be sealing that and restriping that, so it'll look as good as the brand new looking parking lot that the city, the, the school board and the schools have right there. So that's, that's working. We're also going to do some preventive maintenance on the health department lot and the police department, police headquarters parking lot will be taken care of at that same time. Financial recovery plan, we continue to make progress on the president of council's list. He keeps browbeating all of us on making things happen. We are close on the policies and procedures manual. We're probably down to a final draft that'll go out to the law director, the auditor, and the treasurer for sort of a final review, and then we'll be bringing that to council for a discussion in August. I think we, we should have that done, so that's right around the corner. So maybe at the next meeting, we'll have that for you guys to take a look at. That's a, that's a huge step in the right direction, as you start reading the policies and procedures manual, and you scratch your head and say, I, I don't understand how we really ran for years without one. It just really will be such a great tool for all the different administrative people, and, and helpful to all the staff to understand, well, this is how it works. This, you can go to page 13 and look at it. So those will be, that's going to be an important part. The budget stuff is started, we've already started looking at it within the administration. All of the budgets from the police chief, the fire chief, and the different department heads have to have their budgets into the mayor's office by September 1st. And, and that, that doesn't seem like very far at all, that's right around the corner. So that budget process is started, and we know that's going to be an interesting challenge. Hopefully you guys can hear everything that I'm saying, I didn't move my mic up, I see Tyler, it makes me nervous. Anyways, new council chambers, we've got our new council chambers, it's going to stay like this for a while. I, I think it's much better than the cafeteria. I know we've got some tweaks to do to it, but I think this will work much better. I do appreciate, I think Public Works took care of the lights and did some setup stuff. NCT, Tyler and Steve for doing the work here, and then Deb Simpson for making this happen. So we will stay like this, this room will stay up, stay set up like this for council chambers, probably for the next month, two months, until hopefully we get past some of this stuff, but that's, that's what it'll be for a little while. The parks, there was a parks cleanup here recently, and I saw quite a few council members at the parks cleanup at Northwoods Park, and I really want to thank Norwood together and the groups, the citizen effort, to, to really work on getting that park looking good. Quite frankly, I was impressed because there were probably, I'll say there were 16 to 20 people that I saw really working, and then there were a couple of council members leaning on rakes, I know how those guys are. But, but out of those 16, if you think about it, the work that they did, in, in two hours, three hours' time, there was a big storm that came through, but in two hours' time, they really made a huge impact in that park. And you think, why would it have taken Public Works two guys, probably eight hours, two, maybe, maybe, probably longer? But with that army, it was just an army that came and cleaned up the park, and I really did, I'm really impressed with those citizen-led efforts like that, and they do make such an impact, they really do. Sidewalks, I've heard, I've heard a couple of different people have told me stories about being out, and it's starting to get a little bit darker, and a little bit earlier in the evening now, and people are tripping on sidewalks. So if you are a city resident and you have a sidewalk in front of your house that needs to be replaced, it's a big trip hazard, please go ahead and have that, that sidewalk replaced. You can contact the building department, and they have, they have some different contractors that are qualified to make those improvements. But if you have a big trip hazard, there are people that are, there are a lot of people out there walking and running and jogging. Right now, I, I mean, this is the most walkable I've ever seen our city, and now is the time to really look at those sidewalks and make sure they're in good shape. So please do take a look at your sidewalk in front of your home and take care of that if it's a trip hazard. So the building department has a good list on contractors. And then communications with council members, there, with incidents that go on within the community. The safety service director and the chief were working just today on some different, different ways to communicate on incidents that occur. So when there's five fire trucks, or two fire trucks and four ambulances, and you guys want to know what's going on, we want to try to get the information out to you guys a little bit quicker, so that when people start calling you, you're in the know, and we hope to have that sort of plan and that, that in place soon. It's a bulk notification that goes out to all the council members, so when everybody starts asking, but we are working on that. Mr. Gabbard, you brought that up a while ago, and we're working on it, so. Funding for the street resurfacing up there at Indian Mound and Sheridan and Wakefield and all those streets up there was just released, so we jumped right on the paperwork. We've got, we've got documents that have been signed by the safety service director and the, the auditor as our chief, as our fiscal agent. Those were things that I think Keith put in, put in place last year, the ordinances that, the ordinance that was required for that signature to be okayed, so we didn't have to come back to council, that's already been approved, and we, we're in the round running. So I, I still don't think that we have timing, the time to get it done this fall, but maybe, and we're going to work with every, we're going to do everything we can to see what we can get going there. So we'll see what happens. And then, of course, with that opening of that funding, the Ohio Public Works Commission put out, well, we're getting ready for the next round, and what streets should be put in. So we're working on that, there's, you know, this is a process that starts a year or two behind, and we're, we're sort of working to get that stuff going. We're, we're still looking at options on our street survey and the engineering that we'll work there, so, but, but we're making progress, and we're going to continue to do that. See Click Fix, which is, which will be Norwood 311, that's the application that will be put on your phone, that you can then take a picture of something that needs to be fixed in the city of Norwood, and you can direct that right to Public Works. We're, we're getting very close to that. We had hoped to have that live by July 1st. Now we're pushed back maybe to August 1st. We, we really, I, I would say I feel bad about that, but quite frankly, it was because we're doing our due diligence. We wanted to look at another app that potentially could, could do the same thing, and we had a lot of different meetings discussing what are the pros and cons of this app compared to that app. And then we also went back and sort of tried to renegotiate what we were going to pay for the app, and we got that down a little bit more, too. So yes, it's taking a month or two longer, but I think we're getting a really good product out of it once we get started with it, so that's good. Waterworks swim pool usage is up, it's really up. And, and I guess for all of your neighbors and everybody who's listening out there, please be kind to each other. You know, we recognize it's 90 degrees, and the swim pool's the only place to be, just be kind to each other, treat each other with respect while you're there. There are a lot of kids there, there are a lot of families there, and it's, it's been, there have been some, some, some small incidents that shouldn't happen, but, and mostly it's, of course, adults, not kids that are, but there's some incidents there, we just need to make sure that we're all being kind to each other and recognize that it's an, an important asset to have in our community. The basketball court, I keep on seeing some emails going back and forth and some pictures, basketball courts at Waterworks, the grand opening is going to happen here soon, I don't know the exact date, but that is coming. Elm Avenue stormwater, we're still working on that. Every time it storms, every time there's a flood warning out there, you know, I, I'm nervous about it as much as anybody else. So that is, that is in process, and I wish I could say it was, you know, going to happen this spring or this fall, but it's, it's not going to happen this fall. We got to work, continue to work on that. And then the Norwood lateral cleanup, I know everybody's, everybody's looking at the Norwood lateral and all the weeds are growing up back into the middle of it. It's still cleaner than it was. There's another Norwood lateral cleanup planned for August 24th, that's the tentative date. That is the big cleanup that, that is coordinated with Public Works, with Norwood's Public Works and Cincinnati's, and we're going to try to get that cleanup done. We are also looking at, while that cleanup is going on, or sometime right after that cleanup, is hiring a company to come in and put crack filler, which is basically tar, down the seams where the walls come up, and there's a seam, and that's where you see all the vegetation starting to grow. If you look at the Norwood lateral, that, that emergency lane or that dead lane, there's not really a dead lane in the middle. It's about four feet wide, you couldn't, you can't really pull a car off to the side. And that's what makes it so hard to maintain it. Anytime you try to do anything there, you have to shut down the high speed, the fast lane. And like I said, people flash, they, they dash right through the lateral. So if we can get the vegetation out of there and then crack fill, hopefully we can minimize the amount of vegetation that'll grow in the future. It's, it's necessary, so hopefully we can get that done. So that was the last thing, the Norwood lateral cleanup is coming up, and I hope, you know, all these citizen-outlet efforts continue, because they really do make a huge impact.
Thank you, Mayor Snyder. Any questions or comments? Mr. Bonsel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I, two things. Do you have an update on lights on the lateral, about what, I know, I know it's a really complicated process trying to figure out where they all go and what's wrong with them, but have they figured out what to do, or is it just a funding issue at this point?
I do, there are, there are five different lighting systems on the lateral. All five of them have problems in and of themselves, a lot of that, what I have been told is that there are underground wires that need to be dug up and, and we need to replace them. We can, Duke Energy came in with a, a bid for hanging them on poles. ODOT, the Ohio Department of Transportation standards have changed on the lighting that is required for the Norwood lateral. So prior to this, you had to have lights, you know, it seemed like every 50 feet you had to have a light pole. You don't have to do that anymore, you're supposed to do intersections, bridges, places where there would be major problems. So we're looking at a couple of different options. First of all, we've got to have Capital Electric come in and sort of troubleshoot the systems, and we've asked for Capital to come in, but of course, they're like every other company, they're extremely busy. But we have applied for grants through ODOT also for lighting improvements. So we hope to have some lights on this fall, whether that's a full, you know, the full length of lights, or whether it's just at the intersections, we hope to get those up. Of course, if we change them over to LEDs, the LEDs are much stronger, so you don't have to have as many lights either. So there's, it is, it is a work in progress, yes. That was one question, did you throw the other question?
Yeah, the second one was about, you talked about notification to council members, but I didn't know if you might have an opinion on, I guess, notification for residents? So we had the, you know, the issue with, I'm going to say, I don't know if the right word is kidnapping, but I'm going to say the word is kidnapping, and people being taken to an ATM, or forced to drive to an ATM and withdraw money. It seemed like there, from just the articles I read, and I might be wrong about this, that there were, it happened two or three times before really the word got out to residents that this was a potential, because my, you know, I think if Norwood is pretty safe, I don't really, my, I don't tell my wife to take any extra precautions. And I guess my question is, do you think, I mean, do you have any opinion on whether we should make sure that, like for incidents like this, that residents are notified quicker, not just council members?
Well, that's a different notification than what I'm talking, I'm talking about an incident notification, but yes, I would say, I would say that there's a, there's a fine line between trying to catch the bad guys or tipping them off and, and having a problem with the safety in your community and not making people aware of a existing condition. So it was, it is really, the chief's bailiwick to where he says, you know, this is a problem and we need to notify everybody. I, I don't think that, I, I think we're probably, we probably agree on this one, that there should have maybe been notification sooner to, absolutely to certain individuals, but that's sort of water over the dam. I'm not sure what the, what policy or what, I guess, what, what would council recommend when it comes, it's scenario by scenario, it's tough to-
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, and I definitely agree that the decisions are hard here. You know, my concern on this specific issue is that there was, there was a gun involved. You know, we had, I'm pretty sure there were three, but it might have only been two, but I don't, I just don't want to use Norwood residents, I guess, and I'm, I'm going to use this, probably going to regret, I don't want to use Norwood residents almost as bait, like to try to catch the criminal, if you will, because if we're saying that if we would have put that notification out, and that Norwood residents would have been notified, that the criminal would have been maybe less likely to come back, then that kind of bothers me, because I would rather, personally, and again, I don't know the, the crime theory on this, but I personally would rather another Norwood resident not be targeted versus maybe the potential to try to catch her, but, I mean, the cops can't be everywhere, I mean, there's, you know, we have lots of streets all over the city, so that, that was just my concern as a, as a, as a resident. I mean, and again, I don't know the theory behind it, I know that there's smart minds down at our police department, but it also just seemed, it was a little odd to me when I read the article, and it just seemed like it came out a couple incidents too late, so that's just all I wanted to know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonsel. Mr. Dracy?
To piggyback on the notification of residents, something I don't know if the police department or the city's looked into is a notification service called Nixle. I believe that's what it's called, N-I-X-L-E, I believe. It's something that I believe other police departments utilize to notify the residents. Now again, that's going to be on the residents to register for that and for those notifications, but it's something that the police department could utilize, along with the city, to notify residents of certain things. Road shut, road closures, flooded areas that we, we want to avoid, severe thunderstorms, any crimes that may be in progress or something that occurred. Let's say we have another Norco incident where we've got two or three streets shut down because of fire equipment, that's something that could be notified. If we've got, you know, fire hydrants that are being flushed, we can notify the residents of the fire hydrants being flushed, because the water obviously is not going to come out nice and clear for about five or 10 minutes after they're flushed. But I, I believe it's Nixle that, that provides that service.
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Anyone else? Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, toward the end of the day, we received the new COVID-19 city policy for city employees, came through email, and I want to talk about the, the part about quarantine after travel. Last week, the governor put out a travel advisory for a number of states and recommended a quarantine of two weeks if, if you've traveled to those states. City policy is if you've traveled, I don't, I don't remember if it was to those states or traveled anywhere, that for a period of two weeks, you take your temperature before returning to work, but you said that unless the government, unless the state government mandates, we wouldn't implement a quarantine of our employees. I would just, I, I'm not going to like, I don't know that you want to change that, but I, I worry that we set ourselves up for potential outbreak, especially within departments where people work in close proximity, like the fire department or police department. I would hate for, to have an outbreak in one of those because of travel. As a matter of fact, I, at the end of last week, I contacted the health department and asked them, like, we've been, we've been contact tracing and following cases for several months now, so where are you seeing, where's the places where COVID-19 is, is getting into our city from? How is it spreading? And they emailed me back and said it's vacation travel. That's where the majority of people, so I, I'm very concerned about city employees going out for vacation to hotspot areas and coming back and spreading. I, I understand that you, you probably don't want to do a two-week quarantine on everybody, but I would ask that potentially, you ask people who do go on vacation and come back if they have the ability to work from home to do that for two weeks? And I would also like to suggest that you do a more thorough daily checklist before somebody comes into work. This is, this is just what my company does, is not only a temperature check, but if you have a cough, shortness of breath, chills, muscle pains, or throat, loss of taste, smell, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, you're also asked not to come, because COVID has multiple symptoms. Sometimes it's asymptomatic. I worry that if we're waiting for somebody to have a temperature, they could have been working for three or four days with people and spreading it. So I, I just ask that you maybe, maybe take into consideration expanding that checklist and asking people who are able to work from home to do so for a quarantine period, just so that, I, I just don't want it to, to break out within city employees. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Dracy?
Since that was brought up by Mr. Thompson, I'd like to ask if there's a possibility that we could also have included in that report, the number of tests that are being run by this, by the city or by the health department?
I can-
Because if we're running 2,000 tests, and we're coming back with 100 people being investigated, we're not, I mean, we're very low on that percentage pool.
Mr. Thompson?
I, I understand that, but there's-
Just saying.
I, I know, and I don't think that, and when it comes to this, we shouldn't wait for it to be a problem before we address it. I know that you apparently want to do that, and that's fine. But statewide, testing is increased by only 85%.
You can work from home.
Say what?
You can work from home.
I can't hear you.
You can work from home, that's fine.
I can work from-
You're good.
Testing's increased 85%, but, but cases have gone up more than that, so there's spread in the community. Mr. Dracy wants to roll his eyes, it's spread in the community. It's disappointing that we have council members who don't take this problem seriously. I, I mean, it really is, you're, you're from a, a medical, police, and currently nursing field, and you don't take a global pandemic seriously, it's disappointing.
Mr. Thompson?
That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dracy?
Okay, I think I am taking it seriously, I'm just looking at the numbers. I mean, how many times have I been told by council members, by residents, let's look at the numbers, let's look at the numbers? Okay, let's look at the numbers. So I look at the numbers, and I still get crucified. So I'm still trying to figure out where my, where my middle road is here, because I look at the numbers, I mean, you've, you've gone through and done your, your, your bar graphs, you can see it going down. You look in the Enquirer, and what's the Enquirer saying? The same thing that I've been saying for two months. Tests are delayed by at least 14 days. So those tests that come in on July 14th were actually done two weeks prior, and those people that come back as positive on July 14th were actually positive July 1st. So those numbers on July 14th should have been July 4, July 1st, not July 14th. So I had set it for two or three months, the numbers are delayed, and the numbers are delayed because they're, most places are sending them out of state. So if we're delaying tests by two weeks, those people that came back positive were two weeks prior. It's not that I'm not taking this seriously, and I, I'm very offended at the fact that I was told I'm not taking it seriously, but I'm looking at the numbers, just like I've been told by residents, by council members, look at all the numbers, look at everything. I've been saying it for two months, tests have been delayed. Everybody wants to go off media as the godsend for numbers and the godsend for information. Well, you know what? Well, you know what? I'm not a fan of the media either, I feel they don't put out the entire story, however, you look at the Enquirer's report and they're saying, tests are delayed by at least two weeks if not longer, so I really am offended at the fact that I, I was told that I'm not taking this seriously.
Mr. Kelch?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would also like to add on there is, you know, yeah, we as a governing body do have the responsibility to have a good example and set that example, and, you know, I don't think anybody in here is not taking it serious, there's obviously something out there, okay? But we also have to understand right now, too, that this is, we're still under 1% of the living population of Norwood that has had this virus. From last meeting to now, when we had this pressing ordinance to require everybody to wear masks, the numbers rose by one and a half of a tenth of a percent of the population, okay? So the, yeah, there's something serious going on, but at some point, we have to, we have to look back and say, this isn't as serious as we hoped or thought, not hope, but gladly it's not as serious as we thought. And at what point do we do that and give the message of, hey, things are going to get better, there is sun on the horizon, instead of fear? And what we're doing, I think, and what I'm terrified that we're doing, is sending that message of fear more than, hey, we're going to get out of this, this is turning out not to be as bad as we thought, and that's okay. We took precautions, we made changes, we, we all tried to play the game of, let's, let's slow this thing down, but deaths, fatalities are down, hospitalizations are down, while testing goes up and numbers of confirmed cases continue to go up. I think it's, you know, unfair to say that there's people not taking it serious, I think it's more so that there's people not being scared, people that are ready to go back in their everyday life, and one thing we're not thinking about, too, is mental health here. You've got to be able to go on vacation, you've got to be able to go out and do something, otherwise you're going to sit at home all day like you're in prison, and there's a lot of people out here, in our community as well, who suffer from mental health, and that's one thing that's not being looked at. We're all just running around like, oh, we quarantined for two weeks because you went on a family vacation, I think is unreasonable, and it's also unreasonable to say there's people not taking it serious. There's people just looking at the numbers and understanding it for what it is.
Anyone else have any questions for the mayor?
I'd just like to respond.
Mr. Thompson?
I say that I don't feel that you're taking it seriously, because every time I bring it up, you roll your eyes at me. If, if you would choose not to do that, I might think that you are taking it seriously. If, we talk about the numbers nationwide, we hit, I think we're a couple hundred short of 150,000 deaths in the last five months. Thankfully, we've only had six deaths in, in Norwood since this started. I don't want it to be more. That's not putting fear in people, that's putting respect for the situation in people. I don't expect people to be afraid of this, but I expect people to respect the, to understand the reality of it and to take precautions to make sure that we are all okay. But I, I'm not trying to make anybody afraid by anything that I'm saying, I'm trying to inform and allow people to be able to make the best decisions that they can, and, and honestly, I'm echoing what the state is saying, what the county is saying, even Trump is on board with masks now, so I, I'm not out here saying anything that, that is like crazy. I'm sorry, Fox News isn't supporting what, what is actually going on.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other questions? Mr. Dracy?
Yeah, I'd like to respond, too. So my eye roll for you when you say that is because you bring it up every single meeting. It's like beating a dead horse.
It is a global pandemic.
Okay, it may be a global pande-pandemic, okay? But we're getting past that global pandemic, and it's not like we're, we're back in the, you know, the Black Plague Era.
Whatever, I'm sorry for continuing.
Anything else? From Mayor Schneider?
What?
No, anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Moving on to item M, other requests to address council, I have three this evening. First one I have is Mr. Lemuel James, Mr. James, please come forward, state your name, address, and you have five minutes, sir.
Can everybody hear me? Okay? Yeah? Okay. My name is Lemuel James, common spelling, obviously, L-E-M, like Mary, U-E-L, last name James, like LeBron. I live at 1830 Hopkins Avenue, right up the street, sorry, I'm getting my notes out. So last meeting, I was here, well, not here, but at the cafeteria, and I mentioned the Explorer Post to you guys, and for those who weren't here, if you don't know what the Explorer Post is, it's a nationwide program run, used to be run through the Boy Scouts of America, now it's run by a different organization, ages 14 to 21, and you basically partner with a police department that has a post, and they teach you anything from the basics to the insides out, from paperwork to kicking down doors about law enforcement. So you learn everything, including, you know, character building, and you make new friends, meet new people, open up your connections, stuff like that. And I used to be a part of Norwood's Police Academy until they shut it down due to financial issues, which, that was not correct, and they also said that we quit the post, which I can tell you firsthand, again, that was not correct, we did not quit. So I'm coming to you today because me and my family, Pastor James is my father, we have sat down with each other and talked about ways of, you know, building fundraisers and stuff like that for not only the police department, but, you know, like, like you guys are saying, it's important to quarantine, but it's also important to get out of the house, stretch your legs a little bit, wear your mask, you know, but also socialize, and whether it's by yourself or with a couple of friends, you know, keep a few feet in between each other, but it's important for that mental health and, you know, just communicate with each other and get out of your house a little bit. So we came up with the idea that I hope most of you will enjoy, it's called drive-in movies, and we hope to start them here soon, we're going to be hosting them down at Shea Stadium, by the tennis courts, so down there, when you drive down the driveway, if you haven't been there, you drive down the driveway, it's a big open parking lot, tennis courts, playground, Shea Stadium, and a few baseball fields. We're going to be setting up the screen in the baseball fields, and everybody can park in the parking lot, and, you know, you can pop your trunks open, open up your doors and windows, stuff like that, and you can listen to the movie, stuff like that, so make sure you bring your mask and hand sanitizer if you want. We'll be giving $160 to the Noro Police Department in regards to future career, oh, sorry, not career, Explorer Posts, so, because we're hoping, most of the city council members and residents have talked to me about their interest in bringing back the Explorer Posts and also looking more into detail in that for the Noro Police Department. We're asking Noro Police to provide one police officer for our event, he doesn't have, he or she does not have to walk around if they don't want to, we just ask that they kind of be there, just their presence, so people know that they're out here supporting the community as well. I am a member of the Cincinnati Police Explorer Program, I've been with them for a little over a year and a half now, almost, next month will be two years, actually. So I will be talking to my advisors and seeing what I can do to bring in our Explorer Po, our Explorers, as well as other Explorer Posts members as well, to provide, you know, traffic, because there's going to be a lot of cars coming in and out, we don't want people crashing and, you know, getting angry with each other, so we'll be helping guide traffic and also just walking around, making sure everything's okay. So we'll be in charge of security and traffic for that, for these events. Funds will be distributed amongst the Explorer Posts, our nonprofit organization called Elevations. Most of you have probably heard of it, it's my mom's program, she runs it pretty much 24/7, really, and what that is, is we help kids age, school grades, preschool, all the way up through senior year. We help them tutor in their homework and stuff like that, once again, it's career building, we're faith-based, but we don't push it on, you know, everyone, but it's, it's important that she does that, because we're getting a lot of residents, we're getting a lot of residents coming in and they're really enjoying it, especially the kids, and I'm a mentor in that, and I love it, absolutely love it, so we're going to be distributing those funds amongst that program, as well as the Noro Police, like I said, will be providing the money for security, basically. We're encouraging everyone to support this, residents, city council members, if you have family and friends from outside of Norwood, bring them in, and we're going to have a lot of fun. Any questions or concerns or comments can all be answered and directed towards my father, Pastor James.
Can you state the date and time again?
The date and time, we're still working on all the specific details, but we're, we're definitely pushing it, so hopefully here soon.
Is that just an informational basis, or is that a, is that actually the start of the program? What, the, the date and time that you guys are looking for?
You can, you can.
Okay.
You can ask the pastor. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. James.
Thank you, and I've been meaning to email you, I'll do that tonight.
Thank you. Next request to speak this evening, Ms. Yvonne Collins? Just state your name and address, and you have five minutes, thank you.
Yes, my name, Yvonne Collins, and my address is 3811 South Madison Avenue, here in the city of Norwood, and I'm here today to remember a legend and a giant. His name was Dr. John Lewis. He lays in state in Washington, DC. He served his district from 1987 to 2020. Dr. John Lewis is why I stand here today. It's on his shoulders that I stand. This black man dared to face the ultimatum of a beating. He did an act on March 7th, 1965, a day that would become to be known as Bloody Sunday. He dared to walk across the Edmund Pettus Bridge. He knew on the other side what was going to greet him, and yet he stood and he walked on anyway. On the other side, there was dogs, state troopers, troopers on horseback, batons, men in gas masks. When he got there, they told him to turn around, he said no, and we all know the outcome of that, it was bloody. He ended up with a fat shit skull. Dr. John Lewis, he didn't get bitter, and he didn't get discouraged. He stood up and he marched on anyway. He is respected throughout the House of Representatives, Congress, Senate. I don't think there's anybody that I've heard speak about John Lewis that didn't have a kind thing to say about this man. They called him the conscience of Congress, what a fitting title. There's petition online, if you want to take a look at it, for you to sign, to name the Edmund Pettus Bridge, John Robert Lewis Bridge. I think that would be a fitting end to a man who gave so much to America. The second thing I wanted to say, if time permits, is about the crime on the South Side. Everybody know I live on the South Side, South Madison, and I was a little disheartened to hear about the kidnappings and robbery, and I must say, I got a little worried. We talked to my neighbors about it. I'm hoping that they catch the perpetrators, but when and if you do, if you keep treating these young black males the same way you always have, you will get the same result. They might live in that community, so they'll be back, and they'll probably do it all over again. What we want to do is something different with them. We want them to pay retribution back into this community that they've hurt and to the people that they hurt. I just hope we start to do things different. I commend, commend the mayor for the things that you bring into the city and the ideas that you have. I think it's really great when you talked about the cleaning up the lateral and how you talked about, mm, I kind of lost my train of thought, let me look at my notes real quick, Oh, the wellness program and the sidewalk repair, all of those things went unspoken years, and now that you're speaking about them and bringing them out, I'm excited, so I'm excited for Norwood and the things that's coming in the future, and if you have any questions, you can ask.
Mr. Dracy?
I have one, and hopefully you don't take this the wrong way, I, I really hope you don't. Would you happen to have any advice on alternative options versus what you were speaking of and as far as the, the crime that may have recently occurred?
Well, let me, let me say this, I'm, I'm willing to speak about it, and we've got to have this dialogue about the elephant in the room, about our, I don't like to call it black-on-black crime, to me, it's crime in all races, all ethnics commit crime. So do I have any ideas or support? Yes, we do, as being a black parent, yes, and we're willing to share that so we can deter that behavior, stop it. The mayor was speaking of the things that's going on at the pool. You need a, a black adult to even get their attention to say enough, and then you got to speak to their parents. Maybe they won't listen to you, but maybe they'll listen to an African-American parent, a black parent, a biracial parent, a Latino parent, a Mexican parent. As I look around this council, and please don't take this wrong, I see all white males and one beautiful female. Think about that, if your, if your, if your committee don't look like the people that it's representing, because when you step out of this building, everywhere you go, you're going to see people that look like me. Stop in Kroger's, stop at the library, stop at the post office, stop at the store. It's just worth the discussion, just worth the discussion, I promise you, it won't, it won't be a bad one, but you got to open up and you got to have it, even on my side of the... Even on my side in South Norwood, there's so many people. I've been living here 25 years. I look around, I see so, like, when did they move? I see gay couples, I see Mexicans, I see Puerto Ricans, I see more blacks than ever. And they're buying homes and they're moving in. But we want our Caucasian residents to stay also. We don't want to run them away. We don't want to run them out. We don't want them to live in fear. We want them to be a part of this community like they've always been. We only want to make it better. So come to the table and discuss it. So we can ease their minds because we want them to stay here. We don't want them to leave. So with that, yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Something that Mr. Kelch and I were discussing a few months ago. Probably four at this point, I think, or longer. I'm not sure. Was things that occur, crimes that occur that are nonviolent, such as I'll utilize something that's occurred just recently, a stolen bike. If the perpetrators are caught, instead of going through a full process of indictment and jail time and things like that, something that we could possibly look into with our police department, with our court system, our mayor's court system is possibly doing something to the effect of like a community cleanup. Something that, you know, we don't need to go through an entire court process, but maybe hold any perpetrators to a nonviolent circumstance. Clean up, clean up our streets, go pick up garbage. Something that, you know, they can work that off and not have it on their record for the future. That's something that Mr. Kelch and I had discussed probably four or five months ago. And it was something that we're, we started to look into before this whole COVID thing started and our mayor's court got shut down. So it's something that I, that I know him and I are going to look further into once we start getting our mayor's court reopened to try and do something with the nonviolent offenders. Something that doesn't get, something that doesn't get put on their record.
I think you're on to something. I'm very proud of you for that. I'm really, really glad you say that. You're onto really a good track with our youth right there. Just that it won't be on their record. And they can turn themselves around by you maybe giving them that one chance and that one break. And with that, I thank you for your time, but before I go, I do have to say, black lives really do matter. Look at John Lewis's. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. Our next request to address council, Pastor Sonny James.
Thank you. Pastor Sonny James at 1830 Hopkins Avenue. I want to echo, I think we've had words from two great citizens in Norwood and we can learn from them both. Echoing what Ms. Collins said about Congressman John Lewis. I carry this around with me because being a black man, you have to have things and individuals that motivate you on a daily basis. Because unlike a privileged lifestyle, even when you think that you have arrived, you are constantly reminded that there is an energy that would care and dare not to give you the same privileges as others. And so Congressman John Lewis said, when you see something that isn't right, you have a moral obligation to say something and to do something. He was also quoted for saying, everyone should be bold enough to get into good trouble. I stand before you very proud of my community because of a number of reasons. So as I've been challenged in the past for standing before you and always bringing out the bag, well, I don't always intend to do so. In fact, recently I had the pleasure of apologizing to our law director who I had been so angry with every time I saw him. He could probably see nothing but pure utter rage towards him. But you see, I have to be accountable by the same measures that I put towards others. And as I looked at his heart from a distance, I felt like a fool. But in doing so, I had to do something. So I saw him one day at the library and I made it a point to hobble my way the best that I could to his car. And I apologized to him. And I didn't do it because we had a crowd around us. I believe it was just him, his wife and myself. And that was enough. But I want to say something to you council members. We started an initiative called Hearing Every Perspective. Some of you have boldly dared to come and participate. Some of you have what I call fat mouth me and try to make me feel good and say, oh, I'm going to come. Here's what I want to encourage you to do. We are now starting an initiative that Lemuel James will help, being a young, a youth ambassador, which will also add to what one of our council members very well rebounded and brought to the table. My son is 19 years old and he can tell you, probably the last few years have been the only years that other young people have not lived in my home personally because they had been set to crime and things of that nature and we mentored them. And many of them now, one is a firefighter and some are doing very well in our city. There are resources, but the first thing we've got to do, folks, is we've got to come together. So economic inclusion is one of the top and key priorities. The mayor said to me on last council, well, Pastor, give me something. What are we talking about? When I stand before you, I'm not here to fat mouth. I'm not here to waste your life or mine. I'm here to make our lives better. So with economic inclusion, one of the first things that we want to do and we need your support. We want to bring in a drive-in movie theater right here to Norwood. We've already allocated the perfect spot for it. We want everybody to come out and support and we're not asking to take away from our police. My son wants to be an officer here in our community, so I'm not against the police. We just want good policing and we have great officers with a great heart. So we want to pay $40 an hour to have an officer to be on the site, not in the movie area because we don't want that presence. But to be there because as I've challenged, the first thing you've got to do before you put on a program, you've got to talk about the safety of the residents. And if you don't do that, well, you don't get my support. And then because our local program has been defunct and they stated because of funding reasons, we want to contribute $120 to $160 every time we show a movie to go to the police department so that in about a year, they'll have enough funds to restart the explorers program. And I'm coming to you tonight urging your support. When we do these contracts, Mayor, that are coming up, I'd like to see more diversity. In fact, I'm demanding that we look back and fill the gaps of where we're missing. Folks, we can make Norwood the best community across the globe. Let's do it together. But economic inclusion is so important. Elevations and Richmond is a minority-based nonprofit, been here now four years. So only a small portion of the funds will actually go to help support the children. Our first priority is safety. Our next priority is let's give our residents some fun. Who doesn't want to have a movie, a drive-in movie? So we need your support. I know there may be ordinances that you have to deal with, deal with them. Let's make it happen. I also want to commend Mr. Kelch tonight. I was at that meeting, guys. I live three houses east and one walkway from that property. And after the meeting, I felt like many others, we, there's poor communication or no communication. So to see someone stand up and say, hey, we've got to at least open the door to give more residents a chance to at least hear the issue. Getting a one-hour notice is not good enough, but I do want to leave with this. I'm finally now since 2015 on the sunshine list. And I know that may not mean a lot to you all, but it means everything to me. To be connected, to be brought to the table, to say Pastor James, you matter. And I appreciate that. So please continue to do that. If you have any questions, you can email me at pastorsonyjames@gmail.com. That's S-O-N-N-Y-J-A-M-E-S. And as Mr. Dracy is looking at me snickering because sometimes I have email issues and the mayor has told me I need to get a technician on the scene, which should be my teenage son, to help me. So I do have technical issues, but you can also shoot me a text at 513-487-8843. I want to commend Lemuel James. I want to commend Yvonne Collins. Standing before you fine people, pouring their heart, speaking their heart. Let's get more diversity and more inclusion, especially on these community programs. We need more inclusion.
Thank you, Pastor James. Mr. Dracy?
Is your nonprofit looking to help support an explorer program with the police department? Is that what I was understanding from your son?
I want to make sure that I'm totally fair to the leadership in our police department. I wouldn't dare without their permission, speak publicly on a matter like that. I know that our heart is to just do, led by my son who was personally hurt when it closed, to meet with them and to sit down and see how we can partner together. And based on their leadership and insight, then I would be more at liberty to speak. Just giving them respect as well because they're not here. Are there any other, anything else?
Thank you, Pastor James.
Thank you. God bless you all. Come watch a movie.
Moving on to item N, unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? Anyone? No? Then we'll move on to item O, new business. Is there any new business before council? Mr. Dracy?
Not to extend this meeting any longer than it really should have been, but can I have a communication sent to the mayor and the safety service director looking into the possibility of having rumpy pick up yard waste without a resident actually calling? If that's a service that they provide for one, for two, what's it, I guess any cost, because everything has a cost. What's it going to cost if we have that done? And if we can even do that and have it presented to us at the next council meeting under administrative reports if possible?
Thank you, Mr. Dracy. Any other new business? Mr. Gabbard?
This is new business, right?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call an economic development committee meeting for next Wednesday, August the 5th at 7:30. That will be in council chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Any other new business?
It's council chambers here now, though? Or do you mean actual city hall?
In city hall, yeah. Thanks for the clarification.
Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I'm going to be a little selfish here. As much as I can commend this body, as when we started this term, we kind of wanted to go paperless and I commend us for that. But I'm, I'm starting to, I would like to have a, I know we've hired some officers, maybe an auxiliary officer and things like that. They used to deliver our packets. And we're not doing that anymore. And I'm just wondering if there's any, anyone else besides myself that would like that service to reoccur? I personally would like to get a packet delivered myself. So if there's any support for that, I'd like to ask for that, you know, just to bring that out.
Mr. Kelch?
Yeah, I would, I agree. I think that would be a very good idea because sometimes it's kind of hard to trying to get those packets together, find out what's going on. Having somebody delivering that would be a nice touch.
Follow-up, Mr. Brady?
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I know that we've had some issues in the clerk's office and I'm not, that's not an issue with me. I just, I personally like to have this paper issue delivered again if it's possible. So I didn't, I didn't mean to call out our clerk's office because I think they're doing a great job. So I want to clarify that. So just me personally, I'm being selfish. I'd like to have that done if possible and I would understand if it isn't.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
Can I maybe respond?
Ms. Williams?
I'm just taking this off so you guys can hear me a little bit better. I think really the point, and I know we talked about it in the committee, the whole meeting, was just to be a little bit more, you know, responsible to, you know, the environment and economically. Because it's a lot of paper, because these packages can be, you know, 60, 70 pages sometimes. So. And then the other thought was, you know, I know that the police, at least the people that were delivering it previously, didn't always have time to deliver it. So it was either clerk or the secretary of the clerk that was delivering them. I mean, obviously we serve at the, you know, the pleasure of the council. But my suggestion would be just personally, perhaps we could come up with or discuss some sort of, you know, consideration or come to a middle ground on it. You know, there's got to be something that we could do to, just my personal opinion, you know, help the people who want the paper packages, but still try and keep the, you know, the thoughts of, you know, fiscal and environmental responsibility. So I mean, and I know on several occasions, we've suggested, hey, if there's other suggestions, please send them to my office, you know, about other perhaps arrangements. And we can, you know, discuss it with everybody and see if there's a way to do that.
Can I respond, please?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm a conservationist myself and I, you know, I want to do my best to be a good custodian of our planet. However, I think at one time, we did not have a, an auxiliary police to do that. And so it was left up to other people. So I personally, I would like to request a paper packet delivered by our auxiliary police. If, that's my request and I, you know, I, it's for my informational so that I can be more prepared and, you know, most, I do have a computer, I do have a laptop, I have my phone, I have other means of, you know, I'm very well equipped. But I just would, that's one of those things that really is comfortable, that I'm comfortable with and I'd like to see happen. So if, that's my request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady.
I can check in with them and see if it's a possibility and then maybe we can go from there.
Sure. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Dracy?
I would have to agree with what's being said here. Just based on the fact that, yeah, we did discuss the paperless thing and that was when we were at council chambers, had good wifi, had things that we could get on to as far as the computer and pull these documents up if we didn't pull them up prior. However, now we've, our circumstances have kind of changed and technically under council rules, we still should be getting those packets on that Friday. And I do know that we have another, or a new auxiliary officer that I see probably six times in an hour on my street. And I might see a police officer once every three months on my street. So I know at least he could deliver the packets himself if we needed it to, even if he, even if he takes an hour on Friday to do it. if he takes an hour on a Friday to do it, I'm sure he wouldn't mind doing that. But instead of doing paper, maybe we go to USB and just throw USB inside of these, these pockets here and let us pull it up and save it on the, on our computer or something. But we also have to look at us as far as council members printing these packets off, too, you know? If we're printing off 60 pages ourself, how many times do we have to pay ourselves to print packets off?
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. While I personally do not need a paper packet, and I am fine using a computer to pull it up or my phone when, when necessary, I will say that I think that having a well-informed and educated council is vitally important to the city, and I think it's more likely that council members are going to review their packets and really be, probably be better prepared if they do have them in paper, if they request them. So I personally don't think it's the worst thing, and I don't think it's the, I think the amount of money that would be used is, it's probably worth it for the citizens to ensure that the best decisions are made, and I think that better decisions can be made if the people that, that want it can probably get that, that paper packet. So that's, that's how I feel personally. I'm definitely deferring to the president of council, the clerk of council, I'm not, either way, it's fine with me, but, you know, again, it doesn't seem like the worst idea. It was really helpful the first four years I was on council to have the paper, even though I'm very thankful now not to have to file all that paper later, so just kind of my thoughts there.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Mr. Thompson?
Kind of, sort of, slightly related to that. I've had a few requests from people on the sunshine list, if they could get the full PDF of the packet as well, I think we can do that, but just today, somebody pointed out to me, like, the, the number three resolution on here, just from the title, it wasn't immediately obvious what was being discussed, and so people are wanting to see actual ordinances.
Okay. So are, are they just asking for copies of the ordinances, or like the entire packages that you guys get?
I've, I've been asked about ordinances.
Okay. Okay, let's do a little.
I think we talked about the summary sheet. Remember, there was like the ordinance summary sheet? That was with the proposal, it was like two months ago or something like that. That was, I just remember that being sufficient for a lot of folks, is just getting like the summary, whatever the heck. I'm talking about the first page.
Sure. Well, my concern was just that the PDF can get really large, and that sometimes will block people's, you know, mailboxes, so they can't get anything, but if we're just talking about the ordinances, that's pretty small.
I think just the ordinances with the agenda.
Okay. All right, I can do that.
Any other new business? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So just to follow up to that, I was just curious if, and I think it's a great idea to have as much transparency as possible, so whatever we can do to get that kind of information out to the citizens, whether it be just on the website as an attachment or in the email, whatever, I think it's, I think it's great. I know it would be, the two years before I was on council, when, what's it, Vera Thornberry was the clerk of council, I mean, I would frequently, when I'd get the agenda, send her an email saying, hey, could you send me a copy of this ordinance or that ordinance? And, and by Monday, I would have, you know, a copy. So I know that, I know how it feels not being on council and wanting to see kind of that, so I definitely think that's a good thing, and it's something that was, has been asked for in the past, so I think it's great. The only thing is, in the past, we were told that it's not a good idea, because potentially the, the, people could get confused when they see the ordinance, that it's not actually signed and approved. I just didn't know the, if, if it, if you may, Mr. President, if the law director might have any opinions on that, or if we have any opinions on that, whether maybe there could be some kind of a draft put on the ordinances or something. Again, I'm not sure the best way to handle it, but I just wouldn't want somebody to get confused that an ordinance is approved, even though, again, it's not signed at the bottom, so.
Mr. Moore?
I think that would make sense. It's relatively simple to just put a draft, you know, watermark on top of it.
Okay.
And I think that would make sense, is here's either email or posting, it's like, these are the ones that are going to be considered, they haven't been passed. But that's why we have, we have, like, the versions we deliver to the clerk's office are on special paper, specifically so nobody can come up with one, no, no, this is what you passed. No, 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 it's not on the special paper, so, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other new business?
Special. That's what I was told.
Mr. President, I did have one more item.
Sure. Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you so much. So I just wanted to announce that Wausen Way, the third phase, they've done the groundbreaking for that, so the third phase goes from Madison Road, which is the current terminus, and it's going to go, I think, all the way past Kroger along Rossin Road, and it's going to go farther, I just don't know how much farther. I don't think it gets to all the way to Alt Park yet, but long story short is, by the end of this year, Norwood residents are now going to have access to an even longer trail. The Wausen Way is going to keep going, and just want to promote the excitement on that. And then the other item is, I think it's kind of ironic, considering what the Economic Development Committee is working on right now, but Duke Energy and Art Works have partnered together to put up a mural on the Cincinnati side of the Wausen Way. They're working on this mural right now. It's going to have like an Electric Town theme to it, so there's kind of like cartoon electric kind of light bulbs and such characters, and it's going to be, I think, the second largest mural in Cincinnati. And no, unless you're on the trail, nobody in Cincinnati can see this thing. This thing will only be facing Norwood residents, and so I think it's kind of, it'll be interesting to see, you know, the reaction of residents on this. So far, I've heard all positives, but I mean, there could be some negatives, so you can actually go down Wausen Way, it's in between Region Avenue and Montgomery Road, you can just walk that kind of section, and you will see them working on it. And one of the things that I thought was like most surprising is, you know, they started working on this, I don't know, two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, but I thought there would be, it'd be a quicker process. I thought that putting that mural up, it would, it wouldn't take as long, but it's a, it's a long, drawn-out process, and if you see there, they've made progress, but it, it's not something that anybody can just go put a mural up in one day. I mean, there's, there's a lot of thought that goes into it, a lot of time, a lot of steps, so that was just an interesting thing to me, so there's definitely plenty of time for people to kind of watch it be made and watch the progress, and I think we're all going to be at the end of it pretty happy with it, especially considering it was just this big blank concrete wall before, so exciting future on the Wausen Way.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any other new business? Thank you. Then we'll move on to item P, communications. Item P1, letter from the mayor regarding the mayor's courts fines. Mrs. Williams?
Let me get caught up with you. Okay. Letter dated July 2nd, 2020, to Mr. Ken Miracle, President, and the members of the Norwood City Council, regarding mayor's court fines. Dear President and members of council, enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of June 2020. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the letter be received and filed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Brady?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brady. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Item P2, letter from auditor's office regarding the June monthly financial reports.
Letter dated July 1st, 2020, Norwood City Council. Dear council members, this letter is to let you know that the June monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on July 1st. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Donardo?
Motion that we receive and file that letter.
Motion by Mr. Donardo to receive and file. May I have a second? Mr. Kelch?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kelch. Any discussion? Mr. Bonzel?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, you know, finance committee talked about this, and I know that it's going to come up in the future, but I was reviewing the financial reports for the mid-year, and for the, especially for the public lands and buildings and a few other keys, there seemed to be a decent amount of, of capital dollars that did not have, either were not spent yet or did not have a purchase order yet for, and so I just wanted to make sure and just make it known, and I think if we're going to talk about it, but if the administration, if there's areas in the original plan where we saved money or projects that aren't feasible, you know, I would just ask the administration to let finance committee or just let this council know, you know, as soon as possible, if they're kind of looking for council to give input on prioritization for kind of what, what should we do instead? Because I do want to make sure that, you know, we keep making progress with the city, and thankfully, there has been a few projects where we've come in under budget and under bid, so I think that's an excellent thing. But there might be a few projects, like, for example, the steps at Millcrest Park, that we, we either are choosing not to do because we found an alternate path to do it, or we're, maybe we can't do it this year for logistics purposes, so, you know, just encourage that communication to stay open, because I want to make sure, again, that we can keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
Yes.
Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye. Motion passes. Item Q, excuse absent members, all members are present. Item R, adjournment. Mr. Brady?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Brady to adjourn. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Thompson. Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel?
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard?
Yes.
Mr. Dracy?
No.
All right, Mr. Kelch?
Yes.
Mr. Donardo?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, we have six ayes, one no.